Okay, as usual kids can go to kids class, the volunteers will take them, volunteers will take them. And please come forward, still slide is just like Om Namah Bhagavate Vasudevaya
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 Narayana Namaskritya
Narayana Namaskritya
Naramchayva Narotamam
Naramchayva Narotamam
Devin Sarasvinyasam
Devin Sarasvinyasam
Adodrayam Budhiraye
Adodrayam Budhiraye
Nashaprayeshu Badreshu
Nashaprayeshu Badreshu
Hitkyam Bhagavata Zevaya
Hitkyam Bhagavata Zevaya
Halavati Utthamasloke
Halavati Utthamasloke
Bhakti Bhavati Heshiki
Bhakti Bhavati Heshiki
Om Atyana Dviyam Dasya
Om Atyana Dviyam Dasya
Anandra Shalapaya
Anandra Shalapaya
Chakshur Mitham Ena
Chakshur Mitham Ena
Asmae Shri Gurave Namaha
Asmae Shri Gurave Namaha
Namak Om Vishnu Padaya
Namak Om Vishnu Padaya
Krishna Prishthaya Bhutale
Krishna Prishthaya Bhutale
Shrimadhe Bhaktive Randa
Shrimadhe Bhaktive Randa
Svamit Niti Naamene
Svamit Niti Naamene
Namasthe Sadeswate Deve
Namasthe Sadeswate Deve
Gauravani Prasaine
Gauravani Prasaine
Devichesha Shunyavadi
Devichesha Shunyavadi
Paschar Kedesh Tharine
Paschar Kedesh Tharine
Reshri Krishna Chaitanya
Reshri Krishna Chaitanya
Abhuti Gyanana
Abhuti Gyanana
Shriyapaita Dada
Shriyapaita Dada
Shiva Xadi Hoalwakta Bunda
Shiva Xadi Hoalwakta Bunda
Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna
Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna
Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare
Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare
Hare Rama, Hare Rama
Hare Rama, Hare Rama
Rama Rama, Hare Hare
Rama Rama, Hare Hare
Bhukam Karupi Vasta, Bhukam Bhanga Ekidim, Bhukam Bhava Bhagavati Bhendre, Shiva Bhagavati Bhagavati Parma Dhanu, Ushikse Kneeshka, Hare Om Okay, as usual kids can go to kids class, the volunteers will take them, the volunteers will take them. And please come forward, still slide is just like I'm whispering only, you can come forward. Please be seated. Volunteers can assist, we want to be seated. Yeah. So today, we're going to see something called the infinite is going to get born, right? Lord Krishna is so infinite that, no, it is very, very difficult to find him, okay? So today is a wonderful, late period pastime from Shri Bhagavata. So we will dive into the session today. So we obviously dedicate this presentation to his divinity, he is a pachirata, Swamishka Prabhupada. So he beautifully described this pastime in Shri Bhagavata. So it was very, 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 uh, no kind of, uh, nectarian, at the same time very complicated subject matter. So he gave it in a very wonderful, easily understandable way. So today you'll realize it so much, now you'll understand why, you know, it is so important. Okay, so let's start, okay? The infinite is getting born. Now, yeah. So does anyone know how many Puranas there are there? Eighteen Puranas, very good, okay? So out of which Shri Mahabharata is the topmost Purana. So it is a description, okay, please give the things. Okay, fine. So Shri Mahabharata is a conversation between two personalities. One is Sukhadeva Goswami, next is Parashit Maharaj. Does anyone know who's the father of Parashit Maharaj? Oh, very nice. Others don't know, I'll ask another simple question. Who's the father of Abhishek Bachchan? Ah, that tells everyone, correct, ah, very good. But when we ask some spiritual question, Ravi ji, we don't know, why, where, like that. Why? Because we don't get time to understand our scriptures itself. So this is the result of the effect of British. So the British, so they will see how glorious our Vedic culture was. So next session we're going to talk about this. So my mentor is going to give the class. So three hundred years back when the British came here, there are no beggars. They are very difficult to find any beggar. There is no person who cheats or like, no, there is no this one. There is no something called, there is no word called depression. There is no something called, there is no word called suicide. There is no word called, what do you call? Conflict and things like that, okay, fights were there but no internal and things like that was not there. So we will be peacefully living. So Britishers saw that the root is in our Vedic tradition. So they systematically grow so that now to study these scriptures, we need English language. That is a boundary situation, okay? So we're going to see systematically how they grow so that we became slaves of them in the next session. So it is a discussion between Sukhadeva Goswami and Parashit Maharaj. So Parashit Maharaj, uh, so you all know Arjuna, Panchipandava. Arjuna's son is Abhimanyu, Abhimanyu's son is Parashit Maharaj. Do you all know who's the father of Sukhadeva Goswami? Vyasa Deva, okay? So Vyasa Deva had a son, Vyasa Deva is the one who compared all the Vedic literature. His son is Sukhadeva Goswami, okay? So this Bhagavad Purana is a description or the conversation between Sukhadeva Goswami and Parashit Maharaj. So what happened? Parashit Maharaj once was in a hunting expedition. So, uh, when he went somewhere deep inside the forest, he got, like, he felt so thirsty. So he went into a sage hermitage, but the sage was in deep meditation. So he didn't receive Parashit Maharaj. Yeah, so he was in deep meditation, so he didn't receive Parashit Maharaj. So Parashit Maharaj thought like, no, he, no, he, why he's not respect me, like that, he felt. And like he put a small death stake around his neck. So this sage who was in, no, deep meditation, didn't consider anything offensive. He didn't consider, wearing his son, his name is Shimi. He felt so offended, like, no, how can a emperor can disrespect my father? So I counsel immediately that he will die within one week. And since he is put a snake around his, my father's neck, he will die of a snake's bite, okay? So that is a curse. So he has only one week time. And problem is, we don't know even that is there for us, right, reality? So, so now Parashit Maharaj got one week time. Now, if something happens to us, say for example, doctor is coming and telling us, you have only one week. So first thing one will tell, Ravi ji, I have not enjoyed this world, one week only is there, how should I enjoy? That will be our first motive, right? So even if you see most of the movies, like, no, I don't know, some doctor movie, something where, no, someone does hope to die of cancer, they are commenting, okay, you should enjoy to the fullest extent because you have only one week. But look at our Vedic tradition, as soon as Parashit Maharaj got to know that he is going to die within a week, he immediately renounced his kingdom, he gave it to his son, Janame Jaya. And then he went to forest and he asked Sukhadeva Goswami, I have only one week. Please tell me what I should do, what a dying man should do, what he should hear, like that. This is our Vedic tradition, that they always prepare for that, okay? So that is how it is, that is the reason I say we don't know even now also, hours time that for us. Because the bomb is sitting, okay? Yes, so this is how it started. So now, only one week is there, Parashit Maharaj asked Sukhadeva Goswami, oh Sukhadeva Goswami, I have only one week. So how much I can hear, what will I should do, he was so anxious. Then Sukhadeva Goswami told, oh Rajan, oh king, you don't worry. Even one, no, what do you call, hmm, like, one mohuta is enough. That is like, no, twenty-four minutes, he said, that is adequate, like that, he told. So, uh, there is a story of Kathaum Maharaj, he says. So there is a king called Kathaum Maharaj. So he went into heavenly planets to fight with demons, allowing the devi devitas. So they were fighting and fighting and he was assisting all the devi devitas and they became victorious. So all the devi devitas very pleased with Kathaum Maharaj. Oh Kathaum Maharaj, you fought for us, you tell me what moon you want, like that, no, they asked him. If such option is given to us, you'll give a week list, three weeks, four weeks, eight months and so many other things. Now, look at the Vedic tradition, he asked a very, very, very secret question. He asked me, see, I don't want any moon. Tell me how many days I am going to live. He asked this question. And you know that, you know what, this is the highest secret, nobody will tell. Even if you do any number of facilities, nobody will tell when you are going to die. So then Devi Devita said, no, we cannot give that details to you, it is very confidential, we cannot share it to you, okay? So then, then like he requested, see, you asked for a moon, I asked the moon but you're not getting it, like that, he asked. Then like, no, the Devi Devita said, you have only one mohuta in earthly time, okay? In heavenly time, six months, like our six months is one day further, okay? Whereas in earthly time, you have only one, twenty-four minutes only. So immediately he came back to earth, he renounced his kingdom. Next to twenty-four minutes, he just meditated on Lord Krishna by chanting his holy name. And he went back to Vaikunta, just twenty-four minutes. Then Sukhadeva Goswami said, he arrived perfectly in twenty-four minutes, you have one week time, you don't worry. Like that, he started this description, okay? Now, before starting, see this Bhagavad Purana, out of eighteen Puranas, is the very topmost Purana. Why, you know, see after reading all the Vedic scriptures, Vyasa Deva started to write this, this one. See, because, see what happened? Uh, Sukhadeva Goswami, sorry, Vyasa Deva written all the Vedic scriptures. After writing all the Vedic scriptures, he understood that Kalida people will not read, they don't have time. So, so I need to do something. So he write, written something called Vedanta Shuntara, that is a condensed essence of Vedanta Shuntara. Unfortunately, that is also become a Vedic book, okay? So then like, he was completely unsatisfied. Then he wanted to write one book exclusively on devotion to Lord Krishna. So that easily we can perfect our life, go back to Vaikunta, that is what his target. With that target in mind, he has written a condensed essence of all the Vedas into this book called Shri Mahabharata, okay? So I'll explain the glory of this Bhagavata, can you read it to me? Nigama kalpataloh galitam phalam Sukhamukadam rata drugasamhyatam Vibhatabhagavatam rasamadayam Mohurahorasika boobipaavukaha Who expect and thoughtful man release Shri Mahabharata. The mature fruit of the desire free of Vedic literature. It emanates from the hips of Sri Sukhadeva Goswami. Therefore, this fruit has become even more tasteful. Although it's nectarian, juice was already relishful for all, including liberated souls. Okay. So this Shri Mahabharata is compared to a wonderful food. So we all like mango, right? Is there anyone who knows like mango? Okay. So this Shri Mahabharata is compared to mango, but the beauty of this mango is, it is perfectly ripened and there is no skin and there is no seed also. It is perfectly juice, freshly made and perfectly dripping for us so that we can drink. So why it is called the, no, mango? Because all the Vedic literature is put together, they are called a tree. From the tree, what is the use of part of the tree? The flower and fruit, right? So this fruit deserve all the essence of all the Vedic culture and that is the mango. And see when a mango is touched by parrot, right? So it, the sweetness enhances, right, that sweetness, the taste enhances. Same way Sukhadeva Goswami is considered to the parrot, where because of his touch, no, the sweetness of this Shri Mahabharata is so high, so relishable. I give a simple example, why it is called so sweet? See, this place where Radha and Krishna appeared is called Vrindavan. It is not called Radawan, it is not called Krishna, it is called Vrindavan. Similarly, in the, uh, you know, in the spiritual world, that is also called Goro Goro Vrindavan. So Vrindavati is the one who is in charge of, controls the entire Vrindavan. So that wonderful pastime for the creation of Radha and Krishna takes place there. So every day Vrindavati controls the Vrindavan atmosphere. For example, how the breeze should flow, she controls this much only breeze should flow. And this much only lotus should blossom, this much fragrance should come, the fragrance should flow in this day. Like that, she controls the entire scene so that Radha and Krishna can have a wonderful time. That is the level of details she controls the pastime. Now, she had two parrots, one is Sukha and Shari. So these two parrots, they go out into Vrindavan, they'll come and report to Vrindavati that which place is a good place for pastime today. So they are the actor, then the actors are Radha and Krishna, like that, they can ask you. So which place is good for, place for the activity? So Sukha, so this parrot, they have assistance of some ten thousand parrots. So each has the assistant ten thousand parrots, they go into Vrindavan, they stay there and they give a light relay commentary to the Vrindavati that what is happening in each and every place, okay? So this Sukha went and Shari also went, they searched entire place and then they came back. So Sukha came to, uh, Lord Vrindavati said, today, this place, that is, the Nidivane is the best place for doing Radha Krishna pastime. Do you know why? Because every tree in Nidivane is full of juice, full of fruits. Where there is no seed, there is no skin, the juice dripping from the, no trees, right? So from the fruit, like that, she was telling. Nowadays, when you get fruit, no, it is mostly skin and seed only is there. We are not getting the juice at all. But in those days, it is full of juice, no skin, no seed, completely dripping, no juices dripping. And it was told that, see, mango juice is dripping, on top of it jackfruit is dripping and jamon fruit is also coming. And they also don't have a seed or skin. And full juice is flowing and they are throwing to yavana and this yavana is tasting like a nectar. So this is the best place where cows and, no, all the cows are enjoying wonderful pastime here. So this is the best place for Radha Krishna pastime. Let's have the Radha Krishna pastime here today, like that, Sukha told. Then expiring Shari told, all right, what is this place? We have to come to Madhuman. Madhuman is a place where all six seasons, flowers are blooming at the same time. All six season, fruits are there same time. And all six even, no, six seasons, climate is there at the same time. Such a beautiful place where no, entire atmosphere is filled with wonderful, no, aromatic, emotive, beautiful scenery. This is the best place for, no, Radha Krishna pastime, okay? I'm not talking about our all season, real all six seasons, okay? So when all the six seasons come together under this one. So this is how Shari was telling, okay? So it is mentioned in the scripture, the north, uh, spiritual world, it is mentioned in the Dravasamita. Chintamani prakrasatmasukalpavitsa lakshmi vriteshisuravira vikhalayantam Lakshmi sahaskasatasamramasirkyamanam Goindamadipurusham tamahambajami So it is mentioned that the spiritual world is full of chintamani stones. What is chintamani stones? Whatever you ask, they will give immediately. So you take a stone, you touch, I want to masala dosa, immediately serve. I want to pour it, it will be served, okay? So that is a full of chintamani stones, it seems. And what is happening, thousands of Lakshmis are there, it seems. They are serving, what are they doing? They are cleaning the place and then after they are cleaning the place, they have one Lakshmi serving the different, different things. One Lakshmi is serving the, no, kitchen and things like that. So it is mentioned. Right. So it is mentioned that chintamani, so there, no, full of chintamani stones and thousands of Lakshmis are serving their lord, it seems. So one Lakshmi doing one job, cleaning, other Lakshmi doing, no, kitchen work and things like that. It is mentioned that in the spiritual world, the, uh, the item which is cooked for Radha and Krishna doesn't repeat. Means whatever they cook, they don't repeat the menu even next time or next year. Eternally it is going on a different, different menu every day. Eternally, all over, new menus to follow the creation of Radha Krishna. Okay? And when I was giving a class, suddenly Ravi ji tries to, Ravi ji, I have a doubt. Doctor Ravi ji, suddenly you're asking, what is a doubt? May I know the menu please so that I, I'm hold of the same in words, like that. Then I said, Ravi ji, I don't know, I have only the information, some fifty-two items is mentioned in one of the, no, scripture. Which I can refer to you, but I don't have the menu. So please don't come and ask me what is the menu, if you are bored, it's not my problem, okay? So this is how spiritual, uh, spiritual world is, we cannot even think, we want our imagination, that is the level of, no, spiritual world. So this is how the described wonderful, late period pastimes of Krishna is described in the Shri Mahabharata. That is why it is called, like, no, Bhagavata Rasamaday, it is a nectarian juice of Bhagavata, okay? Now, yes, now, so, so another important thing is, so when we read Bhagavata, it is mentioned that we stay younger. I was hearing this, hey, how we can stay younger here? I'm getting old already, my eyes are white and things like that. So it is mentioned that when we read Bhagavata, what happens? Our heart gets beautified. So I'll give a simple example so that you will understand. See, the satisfaction which we get, we can say three levels. One is on the bodily platform, another is on the mind platform, third is on the soul platform. So bodily platform is, for example, today I'm going to tell, the class is going to run for till ten o'clock, okay? Till ten o'clock. This is a sad expression. Happy, ready? Okay, eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock? Okay, after, let me see whether my body will really react. After seven thirty, eight o'clock, when will the person will finish? Even if you say, if you don't say that, your stomach will say something, something will come, it's like acid to your stomach, right? So like, so this is the body platform, say for example, some beggar is there, right? So he is, no, didn't have food for like seven days kind of thing or three days something. You suddenly give food, he will be no satisfied, no happy, that knows today's person food. So but then next time, again he will get a problem. So whatever the satisfaction we get on the bodily platform cannot stay forever, it's temporary, we get a problem again. Next level of satisfaction in the mind, something called peacefulness, we can assume. So what is that, I will look, for example, we go through some loan problem or we go through some loan problem or we go through some medical problem. So what happens, some, one of our friend will come and tell, you don't worry, today, no, uh, today you may go through a problem, I really help you. Like, no, you go through medical problem, I will be there to use, that, no, it can support, like, he will support really nice. So with that, what will happen, we will feel peaceful, we will be satisfied, okay? Somebody is there to help me, somebody is there to support me. But what happens, again another will tell problem, back to this by one minute. So the, the satisfaction which we derive from mind platform is also temporary. Next is on the soul platform. So this soul platform is very, very, very blissful, okay? So I'll tell the pastime so that you understand, now how it is very, very blissful. See, in Vrindavan, what happens is Krishna goes and steals, not to whom so many gopis house, okay? And he steals successfully that, no, it is so troublesome for the gopis. So the gopis started to go and assemble near, you know, Ashwada's house and tell that, your kana, your lada is stealing butter from her house, like that, no, she is, no, they all is compared to Ashwadanaya. Now Ashwadanaya had close to ten lakh cows in her house, okay? All the other gopis had very less cows really compared to Ashwadanaya. So the Ashwadanaya is saying, I have ten lakh cows, yeah? Why did, why Krishna will come and steal in your house, you are telling something rubbish, please check. Like that, she always, no, send them back. So this gopis are very tired, like to convince Ashwada. So because now gopis have complained to mother Ashwada, Krishna became more mischievous. What he used to do, no, he goes to the gopis house and if small child is there, he will pinch them nicely. Suddenly they will cry, so all the attention goes there and he speaks simply and get the butter again, okay? This is one thing he does. Next time, no, he let loose the, no, cows and calves so that, no, all the milk, milk is drunk by all the calves. So that there is no milk left. So that type of mischievous things he was trying to do. And like, no, gopis became so tired of this, no, mischievous naughtiness of Krishna. So they decided that somehow we have to catch Krishna red handed, that is our plan, like that, they decided. So what they did is, they assembled small, small bells in each and every door, each and every window, each and every entrance of the house. So that when they enter, they will be able to catch Krishna red handed, okay? Now Krishna, all his friends assemble in front of the house, they were seen like this, Hare, very nice. They made a wonderful arrangement. Then Krishna told to all the bells, oh bells, keep it silent until light finish stealing butter. After I steal butter, still also you should be silent, okay? This is the instruction to you like that, he tried to steal it. So they followed the instruction very nicely. So no bell sound was made, all the friends entered inside the house. Now, since Krishna is stealing the butter, they kept the butter in the top of the house, like this hanging butter, okay? So the Krishna made a human shape, like four people together and then another ladder, another ladder. Top, the first level Krishna was there, okay? Now Krishna took the butter and then like, uh, yeah, so another problem is that Krishna is, so when the gopis complain like this, no, so what he did is, so he used to, when he hits with all the fence that stolen butter, everyone will eat and then he will feed to friends, after that he will feed to the monkeys. And then the birds and crows, everyone will be fed. So then he keeps on feeding the butter, so butter is very heavy, right? Like we cannot consume more than a limit. So he keeps on feeding, the monkeys will say enough and then the friends will say enough, everyone will say enough. Then like, then Krishna will take the butter, nobody will accept. What sort of butter is this? Best, like that, he will throw, all the butter, he will throw it. On top of it, all the monkeys will do number one, number two, they will eat, okay? So the place is entirely dirty, so they are very, very want to, definitely want to catch Krishna. So now Krishna made the ladder and Krishna was in the top and he took the butter and he did it down, down. So everyone was distributing the butter too. Similarly, the monkeys, crows, birds and all the friends had the butter. Finally, final mouth is Krishna's mouth. So he took the butter and he was able to put in his mouth, just one touch, all the bells started to ring, okay? Then like Krishna, hey, I told you to be silent, you were silent, didn't know, why you are ringing your bell now, like that, no, Krishna asked. Then like, no, the bells were very amazing talking to them. See, in spiritual world, please understand, everything animate or inanimate, they have the, what do you call, physical life. They can speak, they can express their feeling, they are actually a living entity, they are connecting in the pastime. So even the ring of mother Ashwada, even the, the bundle of mother Ashwada is a personality, okay? So every, uh, personality of God is a personality in the spiritual world. So they can speak, they can express their feeling. So this bells to Lord Krishna, oh Lord, the only job description of our, of our life is to ring the bell when Boga, the night alien is offered to the Lord. And one least of description is that, and you are having the butter, if we don't ring the bell, what is our use of our job? Like that, it's all, now, now, bell is rang, all the gopis start to know that Krishna is inside and stealing, right? So now all the one, like, moment the bell is rang, Krishna is discussing this, no? So everyone else escaped, Krishna's alone caught there and the gopi, who is called Panna, is a deadly gopi. She come and caught hold of Krishna red handed. Today, today, I got Krishna red handed. Today I will show to mother Ashwada that Krishna, your kana is stealing like that. So she caught hold of Krishna's hand like this, she was walking and Krishna said, please, please, please don't tell master, please, please, please don't tell mother Ashwada, she will complain to me. please don't tell Mother Yashoda, she will complain to me like that. So but, no, 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 she is not believing, I will show who I am, like no, she is not at all believing. So she caught hold like this and she entered Randhana's courtyard. And just because Randhana just said, those days, those days Krishna just said, no, the Agisprasari, no man, okay? So one second she left the hand, she assisted the sani. And moment that second, Krishna have turned into someone, okay? So then even the, she, she noticed that, she went inside, oh Mother Yashoda, please come, please come, today see who I have got, who I have got, like that. Then like, no, Mother Yashoda asked, okay, what is the problem? You are telling, no, you are, I am just not fast feeding, today see who I have got, who I have got. Then like, Mother Yashoda, see, are you reading okay, is your health is okay, like that, uh, Mother Yashoda asked. Because the person is not Krishna, okay? So like, no, no, I am okay, you are only not listening to me, wouldn't you just see yourself, like that? Then like, see, I know that you are upset with my Krishna, but still you want to really confirm that, no, it is Krishna only? Why, what is the problem? You see yourself, like that, no, Mother Yashoda told, no, no, it is not Krishna, it is your son Subba La, like that, okay? Then like, Hare, I caught Krishna, when my son came like that. Then like, she again, she took it, so much shame like that, she took it outside. Moment she went outside, she was thinking, today Krishna might have escaped, next time I will really catch him like that. Just that moment only, again Subba La changed to Krishna, okay? Then she told, see Krishna told, I told you not to take me to Mother's house, okay? Then like, uh, no this Pahma told, see, today you escaped, next time I not eat you by this, I make sure that you will get caught. Then Krishna told an amazing thing, see, this time I was your son. Next time I will be your husband, that will be the biggest joke of you now, okay? Okay, so this is the bliss, this Krishna is our son, our niece, our nephew, no, right? But we are getting a pleasure when we discuss Krishna's pastime, why? Because Krishna is there in everyone's heart as paramatma. Krishna says in Bhagwati, fifteen hundred years, Sarvas Chitaham, Vedi Sanvini Vishto, Mutha, Sridhyanava, Bohanachal, Veedes Chasarve, Rahame, Rahave, Kyo, Vedan, Akrit, Vedavit, Ema Chaham. He is there in everyone's heart as paramatma. That's the reason we have eternal connection with Krishna. That's the reason when Krishna's pastimes are told, we are having the bliss, we are having this smile in the face, okay? This shows that, no, this is the bliss of Bhagavatam. When we hear Bhagavatam, when we hear these pastimes, we begin so young, because all our ahantam, all our unwanted things will go off, okay? Now, only I am jumping into this pastime, okay? I will give you so much, what you call, pre-introductions that you are, now come to the ladder. Now, small quick overview, what happened in law? So Krishna was born in Madura and, uh, no, he was traveling to Gogul. And then he killed, by the time he killed Uthanas, Shakatasu, Trinavata. And then Gavimuni performed secret name-giving ceremony for Krishna. After that, then Mother Yashoda saw the entire cosmic creation within the mouth of Krishna, not once, twice. So one day what happened, so when Krishna was so young, like, no, she wanted to see whether Krishna had got some teeth, okay? So she was seeing, looking at this anxiously, that is there any teeth, like one day Krishna was yawning. So while yawning, he was looking for a teeth and one teeth was there, something like that. Along with the teeth, she again saw the entire universe within the mouth of Krishna. Then like, she was about to get bewildered, then like, no, Krishna suddenly closed his mouth again. This is not the time to show the pastime, I will show it again like that. Then you all know that, no Brahman, Arita, where no Krishna ate the mud. Then Master, Mother Yashoda asked, show me your mouth, then entire universe was shown in his mouth. Now, after showing the entire universe, Mother Yashoda, instead of becoming a mother, she started to think like, oh, maybe this person is supreme lord, I should worship him more, I should groom him more, like that, now she started to develop a bow. So because of that bow, no, Krishna wanted to, don't want that bow, because imagine, if, no, Mother Yashoda wants to feed, no Krishna, and she developed this bow, before feeding milk, washildu, chilidu, aati. Panchaarti, rain, chilidsum, prasukta, everything, then only I feed your milk. Krishna doesn't want that, he wants a motherly love, immediately she wants to, if you want to drink, she has to feed. At the same time, she want him to chastise, no, he wants you to chastise. When Mahajit can confirm it. Okay, so Lord don't want that Aishwarya bow from Mother Yashoda. He wants the motherly love and affection from Mother Yashoda. So he want to perform a pastime so that she, he will, she will chastise Krishna. So that is the reason this Damadara Hara happened. So, and I repeat after me, very, very beautiful verse, most quoted verse from Shri Madhavatam. Sri Sukhavahaja. Everyone had a rachna? Please loud it, huh? Sri Sukhavahaja. Ekadagran Daseishu. Yasodananda Gengini. Khamantaran Yuttassu. Nirmananta Swayantadhi. Rani Aneka Keetani. Tadvad Chedhanicha. Shadi Nirmantra Kale. Swaran Teetani Adhagita. So as I told you, this discussion between Sukhadeva Goswami and Anshad Raj. So here Sukhavahaja means, Vahaja means, he said, so Sukhadeva Goswami said, one day when Mother Yashoda saw that, all maidservants were engaged in other household affairs, she personally began to churn the yogurt. While churning, she remembered the Chinese activities of Krishna. And in her own way, she composed songs and enjoyed singing herself to all these activities, okay? So here is a, no, wonderful lesson, where we can understand, that, see, this, like, you know, if you see the verse, Ekadagran Daseishu, once upon a time, so we always tell us, you know, once upon a time, so long ago, we don't know how long ago like that. So once upon a time, so Mother Yashoda was doing the household activities. So she was doing the butter churning. See, we see the devotees, devotees of Lord Krishna, who are completely absorbed, where no Krishna personally be associated with them. They don't want to even waste one moment. They, whenever they get free time, they always chant the glories of Krishna. So she was composing a song, by the time, because she killed Uthana, Krishna killed Uthana, Shakatasu, Trinavata. She composed a song that about all this thing and she was singing, okay? It is mentioned that, when she was singing, okay, as I explained, all the ornaments are personalities. So the bangles and the earrings started to make some nice song. So Acharya has given a great wonderful commentary, that why that is happening? See, when, when there is a keetan going on for the pressure of the Lord, there is no brisanga, there is no kharta, ching, ching, ching. One, two, three was missing, okay? So this bangle thought, oh Lord, no, glories are signed, but there is no kharta. So they became vibrates such a way that they became a perfect tune for this song Yashoda was making. So this way, she was composing wonderful, no, uh, song, uh, about the glories of the Lord. So this is how devotees are, devotees are always observed in the thoughts, how we can engage in the service of the Lord. Even one moment they don't waste, that's why if you see all the volunteers, like all the practitioners, no? They don't waste even one moment, whenever there is a free time, they chant it, whenever there is a free time, they hear, whenever there is a free time, they read, okay? But for us, whenever we get free time, we go to YouTube, Facebook, Instagram, okay? This should change, when we do that, no, we get more and more attracted to, and we are taking that right to head only. Even though we see some good things, but it distracts, distracts us. Whereas devotees, they always get connected with Krishna, so that when they are absorbed, Krishna will personally come, okay? I will show in the live, how it happened here. So now, Krishna will come. See, Mother Yashoda is a queen of entire Rithava, and Randhana is a king of Rithava. Why queen have to personally do the churning of buttermilk here? It is not required. So it is mentioned that there are two reasons why Mother Yashoda has started to do it, okay? One is, see, like, Mother Yashoda was feeling complaints, no, that butter is, no Krishna is stealing butter. So then she was thinking, that maybe the butter made by my maidservants are not tasty. Because, because of that, it is not good, I am expert in butter making, let me do it, that is first reason. And second reason, of any food ingredient which makes it tasty is the love of the person who cooks the food, right? We may eat pizza, pasta, burger outside, but at home, even the curd rice or the rasen rice by our mother is very tasty, right? So the motherly love, which I only can give, so which I am the good at it. So let me make a wonderful butter for Krishna. So for these two reasons, she was doing the butter churning, okay? And when she was doing the butter churning, she was doing the churning and then singing and things like that. Whenever there is keetan, whenever there is a kharta, Lord gets attracted. Krishna was sleeping in the next room, okay? And he was in, so Krishna's sleep is called Yogalitra, our sleep is called Mitra, right? Krishna, the great personality, uh, sleep is called Yogalitra. They are completely aware of what is happening in their cosmos, okay? But still they look like they are sleeping, okay? So, yes, so when Krishna was churning the butter, like, no, sorry, Mother Yashoda was churning the butter, Krishna got attracted and he woke up and came, okay? So this is the lesson, Lord get attracted to devotees, yes? When we engage ourselves, see, when we engage in YouTube, Instagram, these things, it distracts us. But when we engage in chanting, hearing, or reading, no, it attracts devotee, he comes close personally. I will share on a pastime, where it happened this twenty-five years ago, sorry, not twenty-five, fifty years ago, that, no, uh, uh, devotee was, no Krishna personally attracted by the devotee, and explain later. So Lord Krishna was attracted by this devotee and he came. And Krishna was so intelligent, that see, whenever child cries, no, whenever she want, he or she wants, they will cry, mama, I want this and things like that. When Krishna here, stop the churning out of Mother Yashoda, to tell that, you have to feed me now, okay? And like, no, Mother Yashoda was very, very happy with the intelligence of, you know, Krishna. Because day by day, his intelligence is growing and he wants, like, 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 instead of crying for milk, he told, like, no, he stopped my churning out like that, he told, he, she felt very good about it. One day what happened is, one day Krishna was stealing butter, okay, in, in his household, okay? So and Mother Yashoda was watching and seeing like this. And now, and like Krishna didn't know that Mother Yashoda is watching and suddenly Krishna turned and see, she, no, he saw Mother Yashoda. Then Mother Yashoda asked, Hare, what are you doing? Like she asked, then Krishna told, Ma, see Krishna's intelligence is so beautiful, no one can defeat his argument. Any argument you give, he can break into pieces. So he is a wonderful, no, he is not red-handed, he is eating the butter, stealing the butter, but he is there, okay? Now, then like, no, Mother Yashoda asked, Hare, Hare, what are you doing? Krishna told, Amma, you are putting so many adanas in my hands and they are making so much stress to my hand. And my entire hand has become so scratchy and like, no, so painful to me. In order to soothe the pain, I kept my finger or pan in the butter pot, that's it, I didn't do anything else, okay? Seeing this intelligence, Mother Yashoda was very happy, my son is growing very intelligent, like that she was very, very happy. So then like, no, so same way, then, no, Mother Yashoda, no, like, knowing is intelligent. So mother want to bring him to his lap, her lap. And before she wanted to bring him, already Krishna put his one leg here, that please feed me now itself. So one leg was Krishna here and then she started to feed. Now it is mentioned Krishna's beauty is so beautiful that, Rajabasis, if they want mirror, they come near Krishna's face, then they do this. Because Krishna's face is so beautiful, so effervescent, that it reflects. So you want to see, that it is much better than mirror it seems. So you just stand here Krishna, you will get your reflection, you give your back of them. So, so beautiful, chubby, cute baby is eating the milk of Mother Yashoda and seeing this beauty of Krishna, the motherly love was growing so high. When motherly love goes high, the milk also turns very sweet, so the motherly milk also very sweet. So sweet milk is coming and Krishna is drinking that milk. So Krishna is drinking the sweet milk and Krishna feels so blissful and pleasure that very sweet milk is coming. Because of that, his smile became worldwide. Now, because of the Krishna smile, again mother became so much love. And then because of motherly love, again so much tasty nittal and milk was coming. So this loop was keep on going, like, like Krishna was loving and motherly love is going, so both are really enjoying. Now, in background, something was going on. What she did was, see, she was thinking that, see, uh, Krishna is stealing the butter because the butter is not tasty. So what she did is, she kept a special milk called Padmatangam milk. So nowadays we are getting, you know, roast milk flavor, strawberry flavored milk, those things is not required. There is something called Padmatangam cows, okay? They are very special cows, they eat a grass called Padmatangam grass. When they eat the grass, naturally the milk from the cows will be flavored with strawberry, mango, that could, all those flavors will be there, okay? So she chose eleven best cows from entire ten lakh cows and she collected that milk and she kept it for boiling. She wanted to give a flavored yogurt to Lord Krishna, okay? So wonderful preparation is going and, and Krishna is drinking milk and suddenly this milk started to boil. Now Yashoda has two options, either to feed the milk or stop the stuff, okay? So this is the confusion she had. Now anyhow, this milk is for Krishna only, so if it spoils, I will not be able to feed it, so that I can feed him again, I stop the stuff and come back and feed him again, that is her thought. So she kept it and she went to stop the milk. Now, here Acharya is giving wonderful commentary, that why the milk is boiling like that? So it is said that, no, as I said, spiritual world, everything animate, inanimate has a life, they express their feeling. So this, no, this milk, we are thinking that, see, Krishna is drinking only mother's milk and mother's milk, sir, his mother's milk, Yashoda's milk. I don't think so that they is drinking, we were made from the best of the best of the cows, we have the best milk for Krishna. But the way Krishna is drinking the milk, I don't think so we will have any opportunity to feed to Krishna. So let us better commit suicide, because thinking that, they are jumping to fire, okay? This is Acharya's commentary. And second thing is, and so, inside the fire is a great tapasya, right? The milk is in the fire, so they are feeling that we are doing great tapasya. What is the use of our great tapasya if Lord don't accept? So let us, no, stop this tapasya, let us go out of the fire. So this is what they are thinking, so this is Acharya's commentary. So please note that Acharya's commentary, like, no, they don't conquer, they don't emerge. What they do is, they sit and meditate on the Lord. When they meditate on the Lord, every atom of their body will be fully conscious of Krishna. Fully conscious of Krishna, that state is called samali. When they are in samali in that state, their eyes will be closed, they will be thinking about Krishna. At the time, Krishna will manifest the pastime in front of them and this is what happened like that, he will explain. With that manifestation, they write a commentary, okay? In our classes also, people will get a similar samali. Moment I say Om Namah Bhagavate Vasudevaya, people will close their eyes. Okay, and then finally at the end of the class, Hare Krishna, they wake up. Then when he asks, no, you why did you like the class? Prabhuji, you finished on time, that is the best part of the class. So then Acharya goes into Yogalitra. Yogalitra means samali means, they close their eyes continuously, every atom of their body fully conscious of Krishna. In that consciousness, they hear, they, they, they will, you know, able to visualize this pastime in front of their eyes and then they write up the commentaries. This is how Prabhupada also written all the books, all the books of Prabhupada is a direct depiction of Krishna to Prabhupada, that's how he has written. See, no one can write this many books in short eleven years' time, it is very, very difficult. Eleven years' time, he has written more than hundred plus books translated, okay? This possible only if somebody is, no, personally dictating Krishna, there is no other possibility dictating Prabhupada, okay? So this is how it happened, now, Mother Yashoda ran to kitchen to stop the milk, okay? Now Krishna was drinking wonderful, beautiful milk, he missed that milk, he felt very, very, very bad. So he felt very, very, very angry. So with that anger, what he did is, he, his tooth, so his lips is called, compared to bimbo fruit. Bimbo fruit, I don't know how many of you have seen, I have seen a picture, beautiful reddish color, that reddish color you don't get in any cloth, it is so beautiful, okay? So that much beautiful reddish color lips, he started to fight. So that much beautiful reddish color lips, he started to fight his, no lips with his teeth, his white colored teeth, okay? So with that, Lord is telling a pastime, no lesson to us, control your anger with a mode of goodness. This white colored teeth represents mode of goodness, the red colored lips represents the mode of passion, this is our anger. So there, no Krishna is teaching us that, no, if you don't control your anger, you will get all that, okay? So Krishna was biting his teeth that, I am so angry like that, so immediately he woke up and took a small stone nearby him. And just, so she was turning the butter milk, right? So butter pots are there. And he just throw the stone that he broke the pot, export it such a very small hole is made. And entire butter, entire milk everywhere it is spread, the entire place becomes so messy. And again, as usual, Krishna went into, uh, with that butter in his, you know, next footprint. He started to walk all over his house and went to the place where butter is stored. Again, he started to feed his monkeys and friends, so friends were there, only monkeys he was feeding. And Madheshwara came back. When she came back, she saw that entire place was missing. Nobody is there, no, like who would have done it, she know, like no, it is Krishna who did it. And amazingly Krishna made a wonderful footprint, so she was raising that. You see nowadays, no, in Kerala I have seen, like no, on Janmaswade, people make the small babies walk with, you know, this white mouth, like. So that now it is houses footprints of no Krishna like that. So she could make out from this pastime where it happened, so she could make out where is Krishna is. Now Krishna was feeding all the monkeys, okay, all the monkeys. Now before that, I would like to tell why Krishna is feeding the butter, okay? Please hear this, it can be very, very nice. I don't know, I have finished my seven o'clock, okay, okay, how much else possible I have got? You are, today because of the function, you are less fortunate, I can say, okay? So, one day what happened? Krishna was very, very small, very small, just one year old. Again, there also he wanted to eat the butter. So he went and secretly went into the room where the butter is stored. So and he saw the butter pot, he took the butter and in front of him, there is a big pillar. And the Nandavra's house, the king's house, right? So the pillars were reflected so beautifully like a mirror. So Krishna saw his reflection there. So when he saw this reflection, he thought, oh, somebody is watching me like that, Krishna felt very bad. So like then like he was making a deal with the reflection, he don't tell Madheshwara, don't tell Madheshwara. I will also give you butter, we all have eaten together, so don't tell Madheshwara. So he took the butter and he wants trying to feed this to reflection, the reflection didn't respond, okay? Then he was telling, you want more butter, I need it to you, but don't tell Madheshwara, like that he was telling. Then again he took it, then reflection didn't speak, then finally he got bored. You don't want butter, no problem, go and tell Madheshwara, I'll manage, like that he said. Then Madheshwara, Balra, Nadas were watching from the, you know, behind the scene, what Krishna is doing. So they were liking it so much and in this pastime, they were describing to other gopis. When other gopis heard this pastime, we wish this Krishna comes to our house also and take the butter like this. They had this feeling. Now, as I told earlier, Krishna, sorry, Madheshwara had ten lakh cows, okay? If Krishna has to come into their house and eat, his only way to come to their houses is to steal only, okay? So because of that, Krishna has to come and steal in a gopi's house. Now, second reason is that whenever the gopis complain about Madheshwara, complain to Madheshwara Krishna is stealing. The other gopis feel, however I wish, today Krishna comes to our home and steals the butter like that they do. So they make the butter so that Krishna can steal. This is the reason Krishna steals. Nowadays, many people ask, you worship Krishna, but he is so thief, like he goes to steal butter and things like that. But this is the real reason. And when gopis will tell to Krishna that you are the thief. Like that they tell, no Krishna will tell, I am not the thief, you are the thief, like that he do that. Now I'll explain why they are the thief, okay? Now I give a simple example, you have to tell me how it is related. For example, we are all constructing a flat, right? We have seen construction of flat. Many workers comes and construct like carpenter, electrician, mason, things like that, we did it. So they come and construct, after finishing the entire building, they all come together and tell them that, okay, you take this flat. Ground floor you take, okay, you have done this work, you take the first floor, okay, you have done this work, you take the second floor, is that correct? Why? Why you are not responding? That means they can, they can write a flag, I'll come with the registration paper tomorrow, is that okay? Tell me why it is not correct? Workers only did all the work, no, they only did all the work, no. This much is, okay, then tomorrow I'll come with the registration stamp paper, please register your flag. Tell me, please think. Ah, so we provided the materials to them, right? That's number one. So we are the owners, they did their service to us, okay? Similarly, in this world, everything belongs to whom? Lord Krishna. See, for example, I constructed this building, right? What are the ingredients? Cement, steel and then water, okay? Did he made the steel? No, who provided? Krishna. Who provided cement? The raw materials? Krishna. Can he make highly much to one goal? Can he make water? This is also provided by Krishna. So that is the reason, everything belongs to the Lord, okay? So in that say, in that sense Krishna tells, everything belongs to me, okay? It should be used in service of the Lord, okay? Since we are not using service of the Lord, we are not thief. So Krishna is telling, I am eating the butter, which is meant for me, this butter is provided by me only. Who made the cows? All the cows are giving. Who made the grass? I only made the grass. So it belongs to me. You are the thief that you are not giving it to me, okay? So when we understand, that's why we say akarma, when we do akarma means, everything belongs to the Lord. We should use it in service of the Lord. I'll give you a simple example, I work in a government company. So we all pay G S D of eighteen percent, right? Eighteen percent, fourteen percent. Whereas when I consist for my office, I don't have to pay G S D at all, zero G S D, okay? Because I am buying on behalf of government. Similarly, when we do work on behalf of Krishna, no karma, okay? Whereas when you do on our behalf, we get nice karma, then we take work again, 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 okay? Now Krishna was, no, feeding the monkeys. So it is mentioned that these monkeys are not haunted monkeys, they were from Ram Lila, it seems. So Ram Lila time, all the monkeys, Lord Ram could not repay. So to repay them, Lord Krishna brought them again in this lila and he was paying their salary by feeding this butter. And this is the important thing, even the simplest service which you have done, Lord remembers. Your son will forget, after no twenty, thirty years, your son or daughter definitely going to say this question to you, please mark it. What you have done for me, they are going to ask you for sure, okay? Whereas Lord, even the smallest thing you do, he will never forget. He will make sure that he will repay you ten times for what service you have done. So this is the reason always we say, don't waste, don't waste time, always invest in Lord where he will get multiple returns, okay? Now next. Lord Krishna was hiding in another room, okay? So no Madheshwara was chasing like this, she was chasing and she understood that Krishna is hiding there. And the monkey signaled Madheshwara, Madheshwara, Krishna, monkey signaled Krishna that Madheshwara is coming like that. Then Krishna started to run, okay, Krishna started to run out of fear of Madheshwara. Now, please understand who is Krishna. Can you repeat after me? Lord Nashudev, when he was so huge, so huge means we can assume like two hundred, three hundred meters tall, okay? That much huge and it is mentioned that mrtyo, mrtyo namameham. Even the depth personified fears of Krishna, that is the power of Lord Krishna, okay? Now, when he sleeps as Mahavishnu, in his pore, eaten every pore of his body, okay? His pores said that in Varadhe, Varahapurana, one pore of his body, you take all the ocean water. All of the ocean water, you put it in his pore, still you cannot fill his pore, that much huge his pores, that much gigantic is long. From each pore as Mahavishnu, one more universe will come, like that unlimited universes are there. In one universe, we have forty planetary system, that is the Bhuloka, Swaraka, all the Atalaoka, Hades planet. And Janaoka, Swaraka, all those things are there. So in each universe, forty planetary system, like that unlimited universes coming from the pores of the body. Such a huge personality, from there, everything emanates, is running out of here. Of Madheshwara, okay? And see, Madheshwara, see please understand Krishna is supreme power. So what happened in one of the pastime, one demon called Kalyanam. So he was running like a sprinter, he was running so fast and Krishna was just walking, okay, Krishna was just walking. He couldn't catch Krishna, so much faster he is running, but Krishna was just walking, he couldn't catch Krishna. But here Krishna was running like anything out of fear and Madheshwara was a very hefty lady, already covered in. Okay, so she was running and running and see mothers, how much they can run, okay? So, but still she was running, so it is so happened that, so like no, Lord wanted to get. Please, no, please marry devotee, so with the time, she was chasing, chasing, slowly, steadily, the distance was reducing. So that Krishna, sorry, Madheshwara caught Krishna and it is wonderfully said in Damodar Shrikanth. Can you repeat after me, they wonderful verse? Surudantam Mughurnetra Ima Mrejanam. So Krishna was crying, mother don't punish me, punish me like that, he was laughing, he is like anything. Namaskar, that no, the, I don't know, lack in the program, I suppose, no, that was coming out. So Krishna was crying, crying, don't punish me, don't punish me like that. So this ended, no, this face is getting, no, all the back of God disfigured. So Krishna was crying like that, don't punish me, don't punish me. So Madheshwara was chasing the stick along Krishna. Then like no Krishna was here to, please don't punish me, then Madheshwara thought, okay? I want to give punishment to Krishna, but I don't want to make him so fearful of me, so she threw away the stick. Then she decided somehow I have to punish Krishna. So what he decided is, she got a wooden threading motor. So initially when Krishna was taking the butter, it was on a wooden threading motor. So she got the wooden threading motor, threading motor means they, where they grind the things. So she got the wooden threading motor, so she want to now tie Krishna so that it is act as a punishment to him. So she started to try to bind Krishna. Now Krishna's hip is, please listen this part alone carefully, very, very important, reverse it, reverse the entire session, okay? Krishna's hip is this much on me, okay, small bit, this much on me. She got this much, this much, okay? She put it around Krishna, she got it, she wanted to tie, then she brought it here, it was two fingers short. She was not understanding, Krishna said this much, that rope is this much, but I'm not able to tie, okay? She was thinking like this. So then like she decided, okay, let me get more ropes. So she went inside the house and she got more ropes and make huge, bigger, bigger ropes. And then she put it inside again around Krishna, it has become double, triple of this size, okay? She put it around Krishna, again she tried to bind and tie Krishna, again, two fingers short. And Madheshwara was thinking, what is really happening here, like that, okay? And all the gopis were watching, see, he is a supreme lord, you cannot tie Krishna like this, how can you tie Krishna? He is impolite, how can you bind him like that? Now every gopi is commenting. But Madheshwara was tapping, I have to tie Krishna today like that, she was thinking. Then like she decided, okay, instead of talking something, go and get the ropes. So all the gopis from entire Vrindavan, they know all the ropes, it is now kilometer length rope, okay? And Krishna's hip is this much on me, okay? So they put it again around Krishna, again, they tried to tie, again, the kilometer length rope, two fingers short, okay? And Krishna like, no, yes, Madheshwara was so bewildered. Again, she was perspiring and trying and trying, okay? Now Krishna has multiple shaktis, like no, pressure potency, rakas shakti, under the shakti, so many shaktis are there. So those shaktis, the liga shaktis are there, those shaktis, internal potentials, they are not allowing Madheshwara to tie, okay? At the same time, please understand Krishna usually, you know, the small babies, they put a silver chain around their hip now. So a big rope, a kilometer length rope, she was not able to tie Krishna. But already inside Krishna, there is that small rope already binding, okay? This is how inconceivable is Krishna, already one rope is bound. But when you put another rope, you are not able to tie Krishna, okay? So she was trying and trying, finally, the, uh, the mercy potency of the Lord, kripa shakti of the Lord. Decided by looking at the endeavor of Madheshwara, she allowed Madheshwara, sorry, allowed Madheshwara to bind Krishna. So now Acharya has commented, why there is a two finger shot? So the first finger represents our endeavor and second finger represents Lord's mercy. So what is meant by our endeavor? So many people will say, Roji, when Krishna shoves his mercy, I will chant, chant from that day. When Krishna shoves his mercy, I will do. No, it can never happen. We should do our real endeavor, then only Krishna will shiver his mercy, that's how it works, okay? So, so this is how it works. So without the mercy of the Lord, we can never ever get address of our mercy. This is how it works, that's the reason we always say, start chanting. You don't chant, you can never attract Lord's mercy, then we will not be able to break the four problems of life. What are the four problems? Janma, mrtyo, jara, garb, but, red, old age, disease. Even in the middle of the night, if they wake you up, you should tell these four things, okay? If these four problems are solved, all our other problems are solved. It's called loan problem, house problem, spouse problem, relationship problem, office problem, boss problem, every problem is solved. In last problem, every problem, okay? So that is a real problem, okay? Okay, yeah. So, yeah, now you can ask, Roji, five thousand years back. Madheshwara is so much hard devotee, she could bind Krishna, but you are telling us to chant, what really happened? To tell you all these things, a wonderful pastime, I will tell, that I might have proved it class, okay? Fifty years ago, nineteen seventy-six, there is a devotee called Ainder Pravji, okay, he is a famous devotee in his town. So he used to do twenty-two hours of chanting every day, twenty-two hours of chanting, okay? Then this time, no, he used to take rest also, there is no call, but he always observed in chanting. So he had two babies called Krishna and Balra. So Krishna and Balra came to his dream and told him that, see, you are always feeding us bros and things like that. This is winter time, we want hot chips, give me hot chips like that, no, they told in his dream. So he is like that, he is actually a medicant, medicant means he renounce everything, he is on the shelf of temple. So he cannot, he don't have any money, so he went outside and went, I have two kids, they want chips, please give me some potato like that, no, he said. So somehow some vegetable vendor shops, they have potato and he went inside the kitchen, fried wonderful, no wonderful, no. Hot spicy potato chips he made and then he brought it in front of the lot. So when they bring it in front of the lot, so like no, the lot is standing like this, they kept it in front of the lot. So this Krishna and Balra babies, they will be having hand posture like this, okay? So their hand posture is like this, and wonderful flavored, no hot chips is here. So what happened, these babies, by looking at the wonderful love of this Ainder Pravji, these chips. Their hand started to come and take this chips, okay? But look at the unfortunate situation of this Pravji, what happened? Whenever he offer bhoga to the lot, without tulsi is not offered. Pravji forgot to offer tulsi to the bhoga, so when the hand was coming like this, I wait, I will put tulsi. Okay, he said, moment he said that, the hand went like this, okay? Then like, hey, they were having the bhoga, how does it matter if tulsi is there or not, like that different, okay? So even fifty years back, the Lord is gristily proving to devotees, doesn't matter. He will not have been great devotee, now all the Pravji readers just chant from me, nothing else. That's the reason I am shouting to my voice, please stand every day, please stand every day. We want different, different language, I prepare and comment to you, if you want me to tell, okay, but please stand every day, okay? Yes. So this is how I now get, I is running, running. One point I would like to tell. So this is how I now get, I is running, one point I would like to tell, so. So when Krishna was born with a motor, he crossed the two trees, or ajurah trees. When he crossed the ajurah trees, two beautiful personalities, Nanda Kurea and Manikriba, delivered from the coast. So they were cursed to become priests, so what happened? They were naked in front of, like when Naradamuni and Roshiva was washing bath. So they were naked, taking bath in some river, so they cover their bodies. So Naradamuni cursed, you want to become naked, so become priest so that you can always be shameless always, like that he cursed, okay? So please note, when we, like from the movies nowadays, no? Many nonsense things are coming, all those characters will become priests, all these, these priests were celebrities in past life. Okay, so please note, okay? So this is the thing, so they were cursed in this one, so the Krishna, no, they were dead. Now, after delivering them, Krishna gave a wonderful light, I have highlighted here. See, if someone is able by chance to see face to face a great saintly person like Narada. Who is always serene and merciful to everyone, then immediately their conditioned soul becomes liberated. So they will be able to deliver the souls easily, that is the statement of, no Krishna himself. He said, I have not delivered you, Naradamuni delivered you. Similarly, Praupal is the one who can deliver us, that's the reason he has written so many books, he has requested us to chant. When we follow the instruction of them, it really acts as a catalyst, then Krishna has to fulfill the promise, no other option for it. That's the reason Krishna personally tells, you have to follow the great saintly person's instruction, okay? Now, with this, the past tense. So the Bhagavatam, the book which I described, is the entire encyclopedic video for daily preparation. You know, when pregnant mothers, they go to scan, they know Alka-Som scan, right? But in third kit of Bhagavatam, a detailed description, how each and every month, the growth of a child is there is mentioned, okay? And how the entire cosmic manifestation, who are the kings now, who are the kings in the future? Lord Buddha, Chanakya, Ashoka and various kings were already predicted in Bhagavatam, okay? And the worst effects of Kaliwada, like now nowadays we have seen, no, two things I can tell. The woman in nowadays in Kaliwada is treated like a sense object. If you see any advertisement, they are putting a lady to sell the product. I don't know why to sell a bike, a lady is required, bike is driven by men, okay? But to sell the bike, a lady is put, similarly cars, cigarettes, so many things a lady is put. Why? To portray as a sense object, that is what is already predicted in Kaliwada. Those days, the woman, like Rahabharata, it happened just because a woman disrespect her. That is all respectful women are, that is how it happened. And those days, the kings will be so biased that even any other living entity in their kingdom, they will not allow for suffering. In this picture, one person was stabbing the cow, so immediately Parashimara took the sword to punish the person, okay? That is how they take care of the citizen, whereas nowadays, so they are predicted already. Nowadays, the in Kaliwada progresses, the kings will be the number one piece in the world, like that is predicted, okay? You can see how much wealth the rulers are amazing now, amazing means accumulating now, that itself tells that how much peace they are. So this is being predicted in Shiva Bhagavatam. So starting, how the creation started, till the ending, how it is going to get eliminated. Everything end to end is there in this Bhagavatam, okay? After telling all this, now Parashimara felt very, very bad, you know, and he was so bad, okay? By your example, he just passed five thousand years of Kaliwada, four lakh twenty-seven thousand years of dating, okay? On the very best, if you are not chanting, on the very best, okay, I will say it, okay? So then Shukadeva Goswami is, Parashimara is asking to see what the Kaliwada people will do. Then Shukadeva Goswami is telling, Kali, okay, you can repeat after me, very nice Shiva. Simply by chanting Hare Krishna mantra, one can counteract the evil effects of Kaliwada, okay? That's the reason, the conclusion of the Shiva Bhagavatam is this. Finally, every scripture will have conclusions, so in the conclusion it is that, please chant the holy name of Krishna, that's all, okay? Then the subsequent verses, Kriti Adhyayato Vishnum, like which we do every day, okay? So with this, I rushed and finished my class, okay? So I have five minutes announcement, then we will go for chanting. So today, we will be offering Gila, not there, we will offer Gila here only. And even the Raja ceremony will happen from here, I will announce everything one by one, how it is happened. First thing is, next session is the Swadhusav, as I told in the last session. You can also cook for the Lord, Jagannatha, Baldeva, Shubhadra, babies will come, they are going to taste your offering. It doesn't matter how many items you cook, even you cook one item, or you bring a dry fruit, no problem, you bring a fruit, no problem. Please bring for the Krishna of the Lord, in Kathitman, doing seva for the Lord is very, very powerful for them, that's number one. Now, second thing is, in this Kathitman, please Thakkanavate Tulsi, what is Tulsi mani every day? Please chant minimum two to four rounds of Hare Krishna mantra this way. And please offer Gila to Lord Dhammo Dharma, so this picture is there, where they show Gila, please offer Gila, don't forget, okay? So before starting our Sanskara, I would like to give a brief overview of Sanskara. There are sixteen Sanskaras mentioned in our Vedic scripture, starting with Divaansamsara. Divaansamsara means marriage ceremony, then after marriage ceremony, we should do Garbadaansamskara. That is, to beget a nice kid, we should do some Sanskara, okay? It's not like cats and dogs, we do something and then we get this, no. In Vedic scripture mentioned, how they should beget a nice kid, there is a procedure involved, it's not an enjoyment activity, it is a spiritual activity. So that is called Garbadaansamskara. After the mother became pregnant, we have Punsanana and Simatanayana, we are going to do Simatanayana for the mother this way, okay? Then Shoshyantikoma is the after birth, then Jata Karma, Nishkarma and Baushitakarma is after birth. And Namakarna is the naming ceremony, Mundan is the Mundan ceremony, they remove the hair. And Anabrisha is the first food, first solid food, then Karnaveda is outing, Chudakarnam is like they pierce the ear. And Vidyaarvahs and Chudakarnam, yeah, they pierce the ear. Vidyaarvahs is the studying, starting, starting to study things. And Upanayana or Hainam Gisha is the next ceremony. All these fifteen ceremonies has to be done by us, okay? The last ceremony has to be done by someone else, that is Antikritya, okay? That cannot be done by us, very, very, very are not able to digest, but reality, one day they are going to die, someone has to perform Antikritya. Okay, okay, so with this, my class is ending. Now, there are six madhatis who knows Simatanayana is going to happen. So I want all of you to do, chant this mantra, we will chant this mantra eighteen times, sorry, six madhatis. So eighteen times I will do this mantra, three times for each madhatis. So that, see this mantra, so why this Simatanayana or this Sanskara is very important, I tell you. See, when they are inside, they can control that, okay? So we have seen, whoever who are in this Sanskaras very nicely, all these Sanskaras nicely. See, when the kid comes out, the kids will not be able to speak, right? So they will not be able to express, so they fear, right? They sometimes they fear, they are hungered, sometimes my son, no, he wants to sleep, his body will be tired. But when he close his eyes, he feel fear too that I am losing my mother and things like that, he always cry, okay? So but when we have seen the kids who are, know this Sanskaras are nicely done. They chant the mantras like Hare Krishna mantra, we sing something on Rashi Mahadi, we sing something on Tulsi Adi. When we chant this mantra, they peacefully sleep without crying. And whenever they feel fearful when they chant this mantra, they don't cry. And these kids, they demand for chocolate, toys, the atomancy is very, very, very blessed. We don't say zero, because hundred percent doing this Sanskara is possible, but no, it depends on the person to person. But we have seen that, it is able to reduce to the greatest extent. So this is the power of all this Sanskara, so I request all the devotees who are giving kids, but by the way. So one thing I want to know for one hour of the Sanskara, by looking at the celebration, one madhati who was in forty-five years old, she was saying. Oh, by looking at the Sanskara, may also actually can give it right in time, okay? So please don't attempt this risk again, okay? One is a sufficient package, okay? So, so now, these Sanskaras are very important so that, no, it can have wonderful, no babies, so that the Indian society becomes very nice, right? So this is the thing, so I want all of you to chant this mantra, one time I will repeat, then next eighteen times, we will chant together, is it okay? Yes. So why we are chanting this mantra is, so we heard that one of our members who was our favorite madhati. She had a complication that seven, seven months this was premature delivery is required, like a complication was there. Then he told her to chant this mantra, so when she chanted this mantra, usually we chant one or eight times. I know I go to town, we chant this mantra one or eight times. So when she got to the mantra, immediately that problem disappears. We don't know how it disappeared, problem disappeared, she had a normal delivery, that's one week back, okay? That is how powerful this mantra is. So when all the, no, any problem you go through, please chant this mantra, it's very, very powerful, it will protect you out of fear. And it will give a protection and shelter, okay? Together, one voice, that's already eighteen times, ready? So, thank you so much for chanting the protection of the dean of the mothers, thank you so much. So now we will get into chanting, just for, we will do twenty-seven mantra today, so we don't have so much time left. So we will do just twenty-seven mantra, while it can switch off the lights, so get your beads. No, one, one will be there, while it is can assist, thanks, thanks. True, that flag can, all the fans, all the lights you can turn on. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare.
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 Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. After twenty-seven times, I will just, no remain, you don't have to worry, you can chant into it, you can chant focus.
Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare.
Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari. Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari Hari. Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari. Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari Hari. Vastu.
Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari.
Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari Hari. Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari. Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari Hari. Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari. Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari Hari. Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari. Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari Hari. Thank you. Nice. Meena Vidhukia and Vakta Vakta here. So, so after this, we will have Aarti. After Aarti, the wonderful Gedi Dhan's Dovalan setup is made. So yesterday is called Dovalan Puja. So Krishna lifted Dovalan in Dwaradona right. So that happened yesterday only. Same, the pastime of this, you know, Krishna getting born, happened in this month only, Diwari Day only. So so many pastimes happened in this month. That's the reason this month is very, very auspicious. That's the reason we ask you to chant. So any activity in this month is very, very powerful and important. And now, yeah, so this is one thing, so we will be offering Gila here only, not there. And all six madhatis will be sitting here, and Meena Vidhukia. Okay, so. So all six madhatis will be sitting here. So we will be doing a procedure called Simatanayana, where mostly the Vaishalis, the madhatis will come and bless. So all of you assemble here, like five-five-two these madhatis, like you know, like you know, all the madhatis cannot do for all the madhatis. So all the madhatis will be sitting here, you can debate among yourselves, chant. And then they have to apply, like, you know, my, my Vidhukia will explain what is the procedure. So basically, what we are doing is, we are offering the blessings to this, you know, these madhatis, that may that kid be our nice devotee, may your pregnancy become successful without any kinks, may you have a very healthy and prosperous childhood. So that is the blessings, each Vaishalis will be giving. And Prabhujis have very important job of, what is, the Prabhujis of, the madhati should take photo. We don't have official photographer today, that is the first job. And second job is, you can stand here and chant Hari Krishna Maha mantra, patiently, so that, no, they will get benefited. If your kid is hungry, eat your kid here, okay? Then you can feed her, okay? After Aarti. And as far as others, Prabhujis can tell, please stay here and chant Mahamanta, so that, the Mahamanta even if kid is here, so that it will benefit her. Is that clear? Yes? So I would like to thank two, two madhatis, two, uh, important leaders who orchestrated this, this one for us. So she is my wife, Indhukia Lakshmi. So she is expert in Sanskaras. She ideated this idea, that I am seeing so many madhatis, as a family, let's do this for them. So this is what, this is her idea, that she orchestrated this. And she connected all the former Varanias and madhatis, and she manifested this. Then we have another madhati called Manta Madhati. She is a lead, now along with her, a team of madhatis did so many sevas. They do wonderful favorite dishes for the madhatis, and wonderful items they prepared for madhatis. And lot of arrangements, like, you know, ghee, bangles, and so many things, they arranged. A team of madhatis did, led by Manta Madhati. Let's all thank my knowledge, chanting Hari Krishna Maha mantra first.
Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari. Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari Hari.
So when you open the order, you will have to take dhrshas Dovalan. We will be offering Gila to the madhatis, okay? Then madhatis will be sitting here, please don't go anywhere, please be here only, bless the madhatis. Now, we should thank even the madhatis, because they accepted for this ceremony and they have come. So much makeup, so much thing is required. And I saw that, no, listeners, no, if this much is required, I will say no problem. Hopefully I will say, okay? So we should have thanked the madhatis for their endeavor also, and at the same time, we will also pray for them. One time we will chant Hari Krishna Maha mantra for them. Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari. Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari Hari. So today, my past year students, plus past the past year students, and other senior devotees also have come to bless you all, to bless all these madhatis. I'm very happy that, I'm very thankful to them for coming today, so that, you all, we all progress very nicely. By my request, they have come, so that, you all, you are blessed very nicely, okay? Thank you so much. So we will be chanting Ramada Rastika. So we will be closing this, please see your, you know, group, so that it is already posted, so monkey back. So please see that and decide now, okay? We will go for Aarti now, or wait, see what happens.